All righty, it is six oh one and we will call to order the regular meeting of the Meridian Library District Board of Trustees. I'm hesitating actually. Thank you. Regular meeting of the Meridian Library District Board of Trustees. It is six oh one on Friday, January nineteenth. We will begin with our first agenda item, public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Thank you, Basile. We'll move to item two, our consent agenda. This is an action item for us. Consent agenda items are routine and considered without discussion. We have two sets of minutes. We have a policy and two job descriptions for consideration. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Madam Chair. Go ahead, Destiny.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number three on our agenda, the financial statements. In our packet, we had the November bills and credit cards and also for October, the, sorry, the bill listing, bill payment and credit card reports for October, November, and the pre-audited financials for fiscal year 2023. Comments from staff?
All right. The only real comment I had on it was in response to a question from Laura, who could not be here, but asking about some of the increases that we see in purchases from Ingram. The reason for that is because we had put a pause in September. And then as we started the fiscal year up in October, resuming purchasing of library materials for all branches, including starting to order for the opening of Pinnacle, which will, will be building up that collection so that when it is time to open that branch at the end of this calendar year, that we have the materials ready to go.
So excited. Thank you, Nick. Questions from the trustees on the financial reports? Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm just, um, question mostly just for my own edification on a couple of the items on the November list vendors I don't recognize. What is Next Request, an SRH franchise?
Next Request is the platform that we are now using. We're, we're still configuring, but we'll be using for processing or processing the workflow of public record request. And so it allows us backend. So on the front end, it won't change much. The form will look different, but essentially it'll, the process for a requester will be the same. But on the back end, it allows us to be able to track where we're at in responding to public record requests and allows us better integration with, working with legal counsel to address those record requests. And so it's a platform specifically designed for public record requests. And then the other one was, which one? I'm sorry?
SRH franchise.
That is our janitorial service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh.
And, and kind of piling on to that, I had a question about the, uh, it looked like there was a fourteen thousand dollar charge for the City of Boise Library. Could you kind of talk about that? I didn't know if that was a links related or something to that effect.
That was, uh, that's a links related charge. We have a couple of different charges throughout the year that go towards the courier service and links membership type stuff. So I believe that was a prorated version of both of those services. But I'll ask Emma for clarification because I don't remember.
That's exactly what it's for. It's a complicated formula that is used by the latest consortium to build us for all of the deliveries and we are built quarterly.
And not only deliveries, but also our portion of ILA, the software for checking in and out and putting books into the system. So it's, it gets, it's a messy math problem, but that's what that's for.
Other questions? I'll bet that spreadsheet is spectacular. Uh, anything? All right, entertain a motion.
We approve the October and November financials and the dispersment approvals.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Josh, for the comment. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number four on our agenda to set the budget hearing date for the fiscal year 2025 budget. Memo was included in our packet. We are required to provide that to the county as the memo noted by the end of April. So this is establishing the budget hearing date for, sorry, August twenty first, which is, would be our normal August meeting, holding that hearing just prior to the August meeting, which has been our standard practice for a number of years. I do have one question. Do we have to tell them what time or just the date?
I believe for right now, it's just the date, but from my recollection, Emma, did you have any other correspondence, correspondence with them on that? I didn't see that.
I believe it's just the date. We confirmed this last year. Let me check in my email. It would not hurt certainly to have the time.
Yeah, I would, I would think we would schedule a time of six thirty, which is six thirty PM, which is prior to our regularly scheduled board meeting at seven.
Typically, we've done six forty-five or six thirty depending on how much of a buffer it's needed. But we could definitely, I don't think it would hurt to amend the memo to include a six thirty start time. And then if they need it, it's there.
Yeah, we have done six forty-five in the past, but it's hard to know how many folks will come.
Six thirty gives us a better buffer.
I think so, yeah. Okay. Other comments from staff or questions from the trustees? So hearing none, I would enter.
I would recommend including the ten.
Okay, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to establish the fiscal year 2025 budget hearing date and time as six thirty PM on August twenty first, twenty twenty four. Go ahead, Josh.
And try and move that we have our twenty twenty four annual budget meeting and public hearing at six thirty PM on August twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, that brings us to item number five on our agenda. I believe these will be considered as three separate action items, but they are related. We have memos in our packet. As the trustees may recall from a prior meeting, we have kind of shifted our banking over to a set of accounts at ICCU, the Idaho Central Credit Union, streamlining efforts for staff, increasing our earnings, interest earnings potential and a number of other benefits. That action was approved in the past. Staff has been working on making that transition and is now ready to ask the board to approve closure of two accounts. Or two sets of accounts, I guess. So we'll begin with the first, the closure of the first interstate bank accounts, item five A. This memo was included in the packet. Comments or questions here? All right, entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I move that we, what's the word? Do we close the, the bank account, the first interstate bank account as listed in this memorandum?
Thank you, Jeff. Second. Thank you, Destiny. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Similarly, we have item five B to close bank accounts at US Bank as outlined in the memo.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Destiny.
I move to approve the closure of US Bank accounts as stated in the memorandum.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us finally to item number C was actually to approve a opening of account. This is a little bit of a cleanup. For those of us that bank at ICCU, we know that we are required to have what they call a shared savings account, maintain a twenty-five dollar deposit there. In our previous action, we authorized the four other accounts that we were using for payroll and dispersment processing, but not this required twenty-five dollar account. So this is just to amend that act or clean up that a little bit and approve the opening of that fifth account. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we open the shared membership savings account at ICCU as listed in this memo.
Thank you, Jeff. Second. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number six on our agenda, the holiday closure schedule for calendar year 2024. This list of holiday dates when the library would be closed is provided in our packet. I believe these are the same dates that we used for twenty twenty-three. Nick?
Correct. All of the same holiday dates and closure dates as twenty twenty-three, but with the reflected days for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions on the holiday schedule or comments? Or I'd entertain a motion?
I move we approve the closure schedule for twenty twenty-four as listed in our packet.
Second. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item seven on our agenda and I believe, okay, go ahead.
All right, so we have, uh, in the board packet, the, um, the board updates from December and January since we had canceled the, the board meeting in December. So a couple of months worth of updates in there. The, the first update that want to talk about is the foundation and they received a grant for a little over four thousand dollars and it's to go to youth materials for the South Branch, which is also known as Pinnacle. And so they're, they're continuing to work on getting us as much funds as possible to go towards Pinnacle. And now that we are shifting all of our focus on to that branch and we appreciate the work that the foundation is doing and also the Idaho Community Foundation for donating those funds. Some quick branch updates. We have hired Basile to be the Assistant Director of Branches. And with that, we are now searching for his replacement to be the manager at Unbound. And we, we've been working with a consultant to allow us to bring back the resin printing that we had paused until we had met with a safety consultant. That process has played out and three D printing is now up and running again for resin printing at Unbound. We are working at Cherry Lane to update some of the magazine area to be reopened. And so that will be coming soon and we've been moving people around in our staff spaces to make them paired up with the, their teammates so that we can have better efficiency and, and better cohesiveness in, in working with librarians and associate librarians together, library assistants working together, managers, supervisors working together and so on. So working on some of those pieces. And if you come into Cherry Lane, you'll start to see the magazine area reverting back from an admin space to a public use space soon. So all the furniture is out of there. Now we just have to kind of start shifting everything back and, and filling it back in. And then Orchard Park is, we were fully staffed with librarians again up there. And so we have new programs going in and we've been doing some staff training up there as well. Our HR department has been busy with lots of interviews over the last few months. We have significantly reduced the number of vacancies that we have. I believe last I checked, we had six vacancies, which is a, a big step forward from where we were about eight months ago when we had like nineteen vacancies. And so the, the trouble is a lot of, uh, the, the vacancies that we fill have been for good or for bad. Depends on how you look at it sometimes, but I always view it as good that we're promoting from within. And so we, we have a lot of backfill positions that we have to routinely fill. So we, we've been doing a great job of recruiting from within and building our staff up to be able to take on those positions. And so that's something that is important to us. It's, it's in our strategic plan. And it's something that we will continue to do and build up our team to be able to take on those next challenges as they become available. We had a, a great open enrollment process and that team is, is rocking as we go through all the different pieces. Some of the numbers, one of the things that I, I would like to do for you in the coming months is to put context to these numbers to show, rather than just the, the raw numbers, what does this mean in context of, you know, the prior month or the prior year to get, to be, give a better idea. But even so, looking at some of the raw numbers is, is always interesting, at least for me, especially when we look at like the collection maintenance numbers, how many items are added, how many items are removed and, and what that looks like each month. So we'll go through and read numbers, but we're, we're doing a lot of work on all fronts. And if you ever come into any of the branches, you'll see the, those computer and network numbers and where they're being used. Our computer labs and our wireless are always in use, so. And then when we look at our circulation, we had a lot of new accounts created, but the numbers were kind of down and I'm not really sure what that is due to. But a, a one month down is, is not concerning for us. But if, if it's a trend over like a six month, three, three to six month period, it's something that we'll definitely want to address. So I'm not positive what those numbers are attributed to in terms of seeing a, the red, which is something we're not as accustomed to seeing.
And just to confirm, these are through December or through November?
These, actually, I'm looking at it. Those look like they're through November. But it is through, oh, it is through December. Never mind. And then when we go to the next one, I know that we're not fully going to have these because we are in the process of updating our backend system for three D prints. But those numbers I, I know are, are off because I'm still trying to figure out how to create some technical jargon stuff that will allow us to have access to the information the way that we need to. So as soon as I learn how to write that code this weekend, we will have access again to that information. So I just have to learn some things that I'm not yet familiar with, but I will be by Monday. However, lots of questions, lots of people. And we're continually getting out into the community, which is a, a big focus for us is getting out and, and helping, like I say, every month, I think, you know, meeting up the community where they are and not just expecting the community to come to our brick and mortar. Lots of programs. I, I've been really pleased with, with how our programs are going. If you've seen our redesigned program brochure in the last few months, it is packed full of great programs. Some of the ones that I've actually been able to get to, there's been a few of the pajama storytimes that are, are fun to pop in and, and see, you know, late on a, you know, Thursday night or the breakfast event, networking event that is sponsored by businesses at Unbound early on a Thursday morning. Those are some of the, the fun events that we have going on. But I think just about any day you stop by one of our locations, you're going to see something happening, so. Numbers for the most part going up. Some of the ones like family, those can be a little, I don't know how to say the word, mercurial in terms of depending on what big program we have, those, those numbers can fluctuate quite a bit. And now on to job descriptions.
Thank you, Nick. Before we move on to item eight, any questions on Nick's director's report? Go ahead, Josh.
Nick, when it comes to the, the resin print and three D printer utilization rates, it looked like you're tracking by print jobs. Would it be a better metric to track, you know, how many hours that machine was running? I know some jobs take, you know, maybe a thirty minutes, but some are multiple hours long. And like with the, you know, aircraft main, you know, there's like a Hobbs meter that says, hey, here's, here's a runtime of this machine. I think that might be potentially, I don't know, or you can create all the codes and stuff.
No, so it is, it's a great question. When we have been looking at like per, each month when we present this is tried to create the smallest data set possible to present. But when we look at, hopefully, what I would like to get into is doing a quarterly deep dive on some of these things into like programs or three D printing or whatever service it is. Because most of these things have a lot more depth to it than just some of the surface numbers that we look at each month. But rather than going in-depth each month, kind of getting some of the surface, but the, the per. So with three D printing, we have lots of data. It's easy to have data on that and I, I've nerded out on this over the years. So I know that it's there and I know that I can provide it, but we have how many hours average per print job per month? How, how much money per print job per month? And that is both for the fused filament printing with the, the Ultimakers, but also with the resin. And we can break it down in, we can say the number of jobs, the number of unique users, the number of hours total, the average number of hours, the total cost, the average cost. And we can, we, we can really dive into it. It's, it's really interesting and I'd like to do that hopefully once a quarter, but possibly twice a year to be able to do a deep dive and share that with you.
Thank, thank you. Go ahead, Basile.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I add to that?
Please.
I just pulled up some stats. For example, in the month of December, average print time per print was eight hours and four minutes. And the printers ran for a total of nine hundred and nineteen hours in December, just to put it into perspective. So even though there was what, a hundred and thirteen, I believe, prints of missions, it was quite a lot of time that the printers were running. And I think as I was still at that branch at the time at Unbound, one of the jobs was a four-day job that occupied one printer. So it was, it was a big undertaking, undertaking to get everyone their prints before the holidays, but we were actually able to do so. So that was great. Thank you all.
Thank you. Additional questions? All right, seeing none, then we will move forward to item number eight on our agenda, the job descriptions. We have one job description that has been, had some revisions to it, the accounting and finance manager. This was in red line form in our packets. Question or we'll start with Nick. Any comments beyond what's in our packet?
Nope. It's pretty straightforward on this one. It had more edits than we, we feel comfortable with going into the consent agenda. So we made sure that this one was pulled out just because there were enough changes that it didn't change the overall aspects of the job description, but enough that additional scrutiny through this process.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions on this job description? And just confirming, because I don't see a salary schedule, it remains in the same grade on this salary schedule?
Yes. Nothing, nothing changed on the salary schedule, just to clean up the job description itself.
Thank you. Questions or I'd entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the new job description for the accounting and finance manager position.
Thank you, Jeff. Second. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number nine, policy reviews. We have four policy documents in our packets. These were provided to us also in red line version. We will take them one at a time. So beginning with the record retention policy, additional comments, Nick?
Nothing that's not in there. This is a cleanup effort to just kind of take a look at it. It's been a while since we've looked at it and just really kind of getting us back in to make sure that we're in compliance with best practices and with state code.
Great, thank you. Questions from the trustees? So I had one. There was a comment noted about kind of what about email retention? I know for my, I, different staff and trustees may how, take different approaches to the size of their inbox. So can we, can you elaborate on that a bit?
Let me pull it up so that I speak off of what is there. And I don't completely speak out of turn on this, but that is a complic, probably the most complicated one. And being able to come to an agreement is not the easiest on, on that one. Let me slide down to that one though, so I can read it. Make sure that I have it pulled up here. And if, if you didn't have fun looking at this, believe me, neither have I. It is big and difficult to sift through. But let's see, which, which one are you alluding to? Make sure that I have the correct one.
It, I was actually in the policy.
Oh, the policy itself.
In the red line version, there was a comment that says, what about folks that retain their email for a long time?
Okay, that should be addressed in the, I don't know why that got sent through. Let me take a look. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think the person is commenting on, it says inactive records are to be destroyed according to the retention schedule. And then somebody asked the question about folks that keep their email a long time.
Oh, so typically we, we try and get the comments taken out of there. Because those are typically just internal pieces that are intended for the piece. So that is not a part of the redline and something that we addressed within the schedule itself. I'll take a look at why that is there, but that is, that is what that, those are, those comments are typically internal. And then we try and leave just the redline edits in there, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I bring it up because I do know that for for agencies, I'm sure in the private sector as well, there are different opinions on retention of emails. Some folks like to keep theirs a long time because it's a way of keeping notes on things or remembering what happened. And and other folks love the pristine and beautifully clean email inbox. So it can be hard to, as you mentioned, come to agreement on the proper length of time to retain email.
And I don't, I don't have super strong, if any, there's, there's good reason to be on either side of that argument. I know personally, I still find emails, you know, from a long ago that I have, you know, kept in our long-term retention piece so that I have them because I reference back to them. But anybody who's been here for a long time, the longer you're here, the harder that gets, so.
For sure, yeah. And and the requirements in the code are basically the agency needs to establish a policy.
Yeah, we we have a three, five, ten infinite schedule for emails. It has been there and it's been softly enforced so through the years. But part of that is because before you can fully implement it, you have to have everything properly tagged in order to do that. And that is a a large undertaking that has been routinely pushed down in the priority list for most staff, so.
Of course, yeah, a daunting task.
But hopefully by this time next year, I can have a, when we review this policy again, I I'll have a much stronger answer for that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, with with that email discussion. So we have before us the the updated record retention policy for approval. Any additional questions from the trustees or a motion? We're going to do the policy and the schedule as separate items. They're listed as four separate action items in our agenda.
So I move that we approve the record retention policy as shown here in our packet.
Thank you, Jeff. Second. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the record retention schedule, the companion piece to the policy that describes the different types of records that the library has and the retention schedule for each of them. As Nick pointed out, it is a lengthy and fascinating spreadsheet or table, I guess, not spreadsheet document. So comments or questions on the schedule itself? Or I'd entertain a motion?
Madam Chair?
Uh, go ahead, Destiny.
I move to approve the record retention schedule.
Thank you.
Well, seconded.
Thank you, Jeff. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item C, the code of conduct policy, again, shown in our packet in a redline version. And one of the changes included here was to incorporate the previous addendum to be a part of the policy, which is a change that I appreciate. I think having everything in one place and a simplified read is a good idea. So other comments or questions on the code of conduct?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Jeff.
So Nick, has there been, what's what's the staff's general opinion about the code of conduct policy? Does it work for most people? Are there challenges in carrying it out?
No, it's actually a very useful tool. It it can be used in a number of circumstances. I know personally, I've used it to correct or discipline a behavior that a patron has done. It's routinely used to re-educate some of our after-school youth and making sure that they understand the expectation of of each of them as they come to our facility, both in the facility, outside of the facility, and on the premise as well, just in terms of how they treat the building, how they treat others, how they interact with the space. So this is a document that is not only referenced, but also handed out, especially if there's any suspension of library services. And, you know, it's not only youth that we we use this tool as a tool, unfortunately. Occasionally, we we have adults that we we need to reference to this or use this as a piece of a suspension and the basis for that suspension. And so we we don't take any of those lightly. But we do heavily rely on this document to provide guidance and backing for for those decisions.
Thanks, yeah, it's something I've always liked that we've had. And it's, I think it's, we we've used it in board meetings, unfortunately.
Well, I I mean, I would echo those comments. I appreciate that we have it on hand and and you know, philosophically, everyone's welcome at the library. We want everybody to come and use the library, but we're a lot of different kinds of people sharing a small space and having that guidance for expectations, I think, is really important. Other comments or I'd entertain a motion?
I move we approve the revised code of conduct policy as shown here.
Thank you, Jeff. Second. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that brings us to item D, the addendum, which has basically been superseded by the policy that we just approved, and then we no longer have a code of conduct addendum. So I guess our action is to approve the removal of the addendum.
Correct. So anytime we have addendums, addendums are not designed to li- live in perpetuity. And they should be incorporated into what they are adding on to upon further review of the policy or handbook in which they are adding on to in the first place. And so as the is an addendum to the code of conduct policy, we've integrated it into what you just approved. And now we need to essentially remove this as a standalone reviewed policy. So if if we ever have those, they won't live for longer than a year because of our new policy review schedule that has every job description and every policy reviewed once annually.
Thank you. Questions or I would entertain a motion to do that?
I move we subtract the addendum of the code of conduct.
Thank you, Jeff. Second. Thank you, Destiny. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number 10, our strategic plan and facility plan. This is a discussion item for us today. Go ahead, Nick.
So this is one that we talked about a couple of months ago. We also talked about it in our work session. And in looking at the strategic plan that we currently have, it's twenty-one through twenty-five. And rather than bringing a expedited timeline to try and get the strategic plan and a master and a facility comprehensive plan done in time to be ready for the the new fiscal year, it it took another look at the structure of the document and also my capacity. And my recommendation is that we are more deliberate in planning those out. And so rather than completing the new strategic, a new updated strategic plan in fiscal year 24, completing it in fiscal year 25, so that it is essentially a instead of a twenty-four or twenty-five to twenty-nine document, it would be a twenty-six to thirty document so that it it would just go after. So it it buys us a little bit more time to have a a lot more discussion about our expectations. Also, if we could maybe re-engage some of the conversation about what it would look like to have a consultant come in to do this. And by doing that, I I would like to go out for an RF, RFI, request for information, or RFQ, a request for quote, to to get some of the that information back to us so that while we're doing our budget process this spring, and then to build that into our conversation in the summer for the budget process. If it if that is something that you all are willing to entertain, we will at least have more information to be able to make that decision at that time. And also, it doesn't force us to try and do some really complex planning pieces in a very short amount of time with very with with a lot of other priorities on the table at the moment. So that's where I'm starting. Doesn't mean that we can't get it done. It's just, I would highly recommend not forcing it through by the end of this fiscal year. It's a personal plea.
And then can you just talk to the facility plan as well, like what the what the timeline for that would be?
I I think they would still they would they would kick off in fiscal year 25, so in October, essentially looking at the kickoff of those. And we can plan all of that out leading up to it so that we're not starting fresh at that point. There's a lot of things that we can do in terms of community outreach meetings and surveys and those types of things. We can have those planned and things like of of that nature. But essentially, looking at starting in October with fiscal year 25 versus completing it by fiscal year 25. But I I would still recommend doing them simultaneous so that we're not duplicating some of our efforts when working with community partners and and members of the community for their feedback. If we can ask them once versus twice for those input sessions, it kind of makes that those resources go a lot further for us. So I would still recommend doing them simultaneous.
And then the the interaction with the Cherry Lane renovation is that, a 24 project as well? Or a twenty-six project?
That would be is is which which piece comes first? And I've talked with MSR this week and I told them, we've already have it planned out in terms of it needs to happen. And we know, you know, with the facility plant facility levy that we had passed by the voters in 2019, this is already a planned thing. It doesn't need to be contingent on a master facility or a facility comprehensive plan in order to go forward. And so rather, we could, you can look at it, I guess, one of two ways. You could wait until you had a facility comprehensive plan to make sure that it is planned out and incorporated into it. Or you can build in aspects that are are planned with the renovation into the facility comprehensive plan to go forward. So it sticks it one way, half dozen another.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? So I would just kind of echo some of those thoughts. I think in our current year, calendar year 2024, of course, we have the Pinnacle Branch coming online, which require, although it's being constructed without our as much involvement as as Orchard Park, nonetheless, it's still a big lift for staff. We have the reorganization effort, which has been implemented, but giving that time to settle and learning lessons from that that may be useful for strategic planning. Sort of support the the case for me for for pushing this off a little bit. I think, as was included in one of your reports, we've had some some failures of systems here at at Cherry Lane. So I'm just very nervous about that. And and I would also echo that we can address those issues with the age of this building separately from the master plan and make sure that it continues to function. And I feel some urgency around that as well, so kind of putting that forward in the line is important to me.
I hear you saying, so you're saying that repair and maintenance would be for Cherry Lane is a different issue than Cherry Lane being.
Um, I think they go together, but in 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 my view, and my guess is the bulk of that remodel is going to be around bringing the systems up to date, right? That's going to chew up lots of the money and the, we're not going to completely the branch is going to be quite recognizable, I guess, when the project is done, because it's going to be kind of that systems sort of.
So
Yeah.
A couple of things with the reorg is we don't have some of the same space demands that we had when we first initiated these projects. If we are to look at admin division and operations division separately from the Cherry Lane building itself, not saying that it can't get incorporated into it, but if we do remove that, it does reduce the space needs at the Cherry Lane facility exponentially. And so we can focus on making, as you said, facility updates with HVAC, electrical, parking, and and public use of the building. And less focus on the expanded needs of the district from an administrative operation standpoint, which we can address in other means with the facility comprehensive plan. We've already found a lot of benefits in separating out the operations division from being spread across multiple buildings and and putting all of the operations division and their team team members into the annex and moving the admin division into the admin building that we're leasing. There's a a lot of advantages, a lot of more collaboration, so, and freeing up of space and also a better delineation of duties to provide clarity for staff across the district so that, you know, having the director at a branch, it's not, the perception is, if you're not at this branch, that, you know, this branch gets all of my attention or all of admin's attention, whereas the other branches don't feel like they have that. Even if that's not the case, the perception is there. And so we're, we've learned, you know, we assumed that, but we've also verified that with these moves. And so a a lot of the the renovations and changes will be renovations, changes versus additions and additions to the remodel that had been kind of talked about originally. And with increased construction costs, that's probably in our best interest.
I would agree, yeah, thank you. So it's not an action item for us today. I think we're just kind of looking for the temperature of the board. Is there a concern with moving the facility and strategic plan off to the timeframe that Nick talked about, undertaking it in 2025 for period, a plan to cover the period 26 to 30?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I I think it's worth mentioning that in our interactions with public, no one from the public comes to the board and says, what are you guys doing? And pulled out their. And pulled out their, you know, strategic plan from the first, the previous five years and said, hey, these bullet points have not been done. You know, there hasn't been any kind of public push to get it updated. I think that that kind of lends credibility to the fact that, hey, we're going to keep doing what we're doing and addressing it in a manner that makes sense. And I I submit that we ought to start calling to, you know, the the MFP or master facility plan or conference building plan or some kind of acronym that we kind of start using to collectively cover the strategic plan and the facilities plan as kind of, you know, one unit just so we're all on the same language. Having it immediately triggered. Because a lot of times I hear strategic and I'm like, oh, not the script. You know, it it's easy to get kind of lose the forest lose trees. I think just vocabulary at the start is a simple way to to kind of cage everyone with gyros so that we're all kind of on the same page in a pretty efficient manner. But that's just a tiny little thing to put out there.
Thank you.
Libraries are very, very good at jargon. So I mean, maybe not as good as the military, but we 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 do a really good job of complicating the the language of of things, so. We we will, we will, we will work on simplifying and clarifying the language and lingo.
All right. Have the direction, Nina? Great, thank you. That brings us to item number 11, the executive session. And the item that we provided on the agenda was to communicate with legal counsel regarding controversies imminently likely to be litigated. Unfortunately, legal counsel could not attend this evening, so in the interest of making good use of everyone's time, I'm going to table that discussion until such time as our counsel can participate with us. So that brings us to item number 12, future agenda items. We will talk with legal counsel about controversies imminently likely to be limited, litigated. We have I.Crim come forward for the presentation. They were not able to be here tonight either. Other topics? Well, of course, you can always email me or Nick or both of us for items that you would like to see included on the agenda so we can get those under consideration and prepare for that. With no further business before the board, it is. Thank you, six fifty two, and we are adjourned.